All right, you're all set to go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julian Hirsch and I am the Chair of the Select Board. I would like to call this remote meeting of the Select Board to order at 6:09 PM on July 21st, 2025. This meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law. The open session portion of the meeting will be streamed live and recorded. We will begin tonight's meeting in open session. Following that, the Board will vote to enter into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Clause 3. The meeting will adjourn directly from executive session and will not reconvene in open session. Before we begin, I will confirm the presence of the Select Board members participating remotely. As I call your name, please state your name and confirm that you can hear and be heard. Laura.
I'm here. Thank you.
Can you state your full name?
Sorry, Laura's present.
Mike? I think you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Teigen, present.
Thank you. Jacob?
Jacob Jones, present, and I can hear and hopefully be heard.
You can be heard. Thank you very much. John, John?
Jonathan Ray, present.
Thank you very much. Okay, so on the agenda tonight is, in the open session, is discussion and consideration of funding for the installation of Mass DOT crosswalk lights. And for this discussion, we have Scott Sharpen here to present some good news.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mass DOT had a program late last year where municipalities could apply for consideration for the DOT to supply rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RFBs, at eligible crosswalks. We went through all the crosswalks in town via GIS, identified those that were eligible, brought it to the Select Board in September of '24, identifying several of them that were eligible. The Select Board heard the discussion, indicated to seek out as many as we can, which we found eight locations applied for the equipment. The equipment, we were notified on the 15th of July last week that we were awarded eight locations, but seven sets. One set is a relocation of an existing one that we have that is no longer compliant. These RFB regulations are new, they're constantly changing. So in order to make that crossing DOT eligible, we removed that set and relocated elsewhere. So you have in your packet of memorandum identifying the process I just described, I'll give you the seven locations of award and one location that is suggested for relocation, and there are other ones that would be worth considering. So the first awarded location is Hudson Street and Center Drive. That's actually the one where we have the currently non-compliant RFBs. Second location is 56 Hudson Street. That is the large red industrial building as you head down the hill from the prior location I just mentioned. Another one is 56 Hudson Street, the other side of that building over by River Street. There are two crosswalks for that property. Another one is located at Howard Street and Z School. There's also one at Davis Street and Indian Meadow, the easterly one. There's two intersections with Davis and Indian Meadow. This would be the easterly one where the existing crosswalk is present. And then South Street at Alcott. We have several, a few on South Street. We have one at Davis Ave, we have one at Longfellow, and one at Northgate, and then another one at Gale. So this will be the fifth on South Street. A couple thoughts or ideas on relocations for the one that's currently at Center Drive? Could be Pearson-Hudson. When you're coming up Hudson and you veer to the right to go onto Pierce, it's a pretty shallow curve for what could be a teed intersection, so vehicles tend not to even touch the brakes because you're coming up a hill, you're turning to the right, it's a very gentle curve. Two other locations that I thought warrant consideration for the relocation. Howard at Church Street. So we have one under the ARPA appropriation at Pleasant in Church, Lower Pleasant. But when students walk from Melican down Pleasant Street, they go across Church. They're now on Church Street approaching the Howard Street intersection. That one does not have any lights on it. That would be one that the Select Board could consider. The other one would be East Main Street and Allen Street. We don't have a sidewalk on Allen Street yet, but that is funded through ARPA. So when pedestrians go up Allen Street, the East Main Street sidewalk is on the other side, so there would have to be a crosswalk there. The crosswalk would be across the through street, East Main Street, which is generally where you want to put additional safety measures when the crosswalk is on the through street and not at a controlled intersection. So, that being said, we reached out to our contractor who was awarded the work to install the seven RFB assemblies that were funded through ARPA. They carried all the same pricing with the exception of the overhead lights. These DOT assemblies all have the overhead lights. I believe Julianne, Mike, and Laura, you remember the discussion about adding overhead lights to some of them and not the others. Well, the DOT standard is overhead lights on all of them. It takes a little more time to assemble them and install them, so that price is a little bit different. So all in all, the cost is $235,100 to install all sets, including the one relocation. The Department of Public Works will cover the cost for details, or we will provide a flagger, a single staff member. When we discussed the project initially to the Select Board, we indicated that if there was two or three sets, we could certainly install them that we were awarded. We were awarded seven plus one to relocate, so that's eight. There is a timeframe associated with the implementation. We're required to install them within 90 days of receipt. We are allowed to ask for one-time extension, which would give us another 90 days, so 180 days. So I'm here to ask the Select Board if you'd like to accept the the equipment from Mass DOT, and if so, how do you recommend we fund the installation work?
Okay, first of all, is it our responsibility to choose the sites tonight?
No, no, but just the relocation. So we submitted eight sites. They awarded for seven. One of the locations of the seven, we already have an assembly there. That's at the Hudson Street Center Drive. The contractor's going to take that out and install it somewhere. And that decision doesn't have to be made tonight. You guys can make that, you know, in the next three months. There's no hurry on that. But regarding the acceptance of the equipment, we need to notify Master, well, we need to provide Master DOT a signed contract by Wednesday. They notified us on July 15th. We have to give them a contract signed on our side by July 23rd.
By July 23rd. Okay, and in your memo, you recommended using some money from pavement to pay for this? Is that correct?
So we have three pockets of money, for lack of better terms, that we spend on our pavement management program every year. $300,000 is allocated typically, I think it was 310 last, this past year, but regardless, approximately $300,000 appropriated at town meeting out of capital for capital. That is not eligible for use on this. The capital article specifically cites pavement management as what the appropriation is for, so we would not be able to spend that on crosswalk enhancements. Chapter 90 is our other portion of money. Chapter 90 is Mass DOT funds, and these are Mass DOT funds and equipment we're receiving. Typically, you don't provide local match from the same funding source they got the funding. So it's state funds that are being provided. Typically, you don't use state funds to do the local match for state funds. And I don't know if it's eligible, and I don't believe it would even work with the timeline. It generally takes a month or two just to get the approval for Chapter 90 funds, and they may not approve this. And then the last one is the $300,000 in the operating budget that we carry every year that is just in the operating budget. It's for paving, but we have reallocated that to other uses when emergencies have come up. I've described this at several town meetings, the culverts that are unfunded. For a number of years, we had culvert failures and we had to divert money from either Chapter 90 or the operating budget to do the culvert repairs. We weren't able to do the capital because again, that's roadway maintenance. So I believe at this time, it's either operating budget or nothing. We could try Chapter 90, but I don't know about the timing. I don't think it would work.
Okay, and I'm going to open it up to discussion, but if you use the money from your operating budget, are you worried about it being too low for the rest of the year?
Yeah, our paving program for calendar year '26 would be reduced from 1.1 million to, you know, 880 or something like that.
Good. And one more-
780, I'm sorry, 780.
Sorry, Board, before I open it up for you. Stephanie, is, would it be the possibility of allocating money at, are we going to do a fall town meeting most likely?
Yeah, for White Cliffs, yep.
So is there a way of?
But is that past, 180 days is six, okay, so I mean, we could possibly, yeah, we could. Or we could just say, put the two in, you know, and we'll install them ourselves, and that's it. Do away with the rest of them. I don't know how.
To expand a little bit on, thank you, Steph, to expand a little bit on your thought, your line of thought, Julianne. I would not recommend Stephanie sign a contract with the state and risk having town meeting say no. I think a better approach could be, to be considered, could be utilize the operating budget today. Have the Select Board, you know, direct us to use operating budget for the project, then go to town meeting to backfill the paving money that was allocated. I wouldn't want town meeting to vote it down, and then we have to default a contract or scramble around to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Okay, all right. To the Board. Comments, questions? Mike?
Yeah, thanks. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, great. Yeah, no, kind of Scott's last point was kind of my thought is, you know, to make sure we're getting this equipment from the state to increase pedestrian safety, to utilize the funds that we're able to now, and if we need to replenish them, you know, that's something we could ask at town meeting if we find that necessary. You know, I don't like, take, you know, wish the money was available from somewhere else other than paving, right? Obviously, there's a paving need. That's why that money's there. But I think getting this allocation of these rapid flashing beacons and the increase in pedestrian safety, I think I think it's worth it to move forward.
Jacob, did you have your hands up? Your hand up?
I did. I have a couple of questions. I'm not, I'd prefer to look at the contract that the Select Board is being asked to sign before we signed it. I understand, and I appreciate you explaining the detail about we have to use them within 90 days. We can ask for extension for another 90, but it looks like we have to use them within 180, no matter what.
Can you excuse me one second?
Yeah.
Someone seems to be here.
What's the phone number? Is it 8844?
There's no phone number. It's a gentleman.
De Moskis is here under Angie's-
Oh, that's Labor Council. Okay, he came in early. And D, sorry.
It's the wrong link, right?
Yeah, I get, so that's, this is for open session. We haven't gone into executive yet.
That's a link to a century by Angie.
Okay, let's see. I'll find it.
Okay, all right. So Jacob, I'm sorry to interrupt. Okay, so you would like to see the contract?
So like, let's, yeah, I mean, let's, I'm wondering, can we accept fewer? Assuming that we're only going to accept the ones that we can install within 180 days, which is what I'm hearing we would have to do. Can we accept fewer than eight of them? Can we say that realistically, we think we could install some within 180 days, but say only four of them? I'm just making up a number. Can we accept four and not accept the other ones? How is this written? Like, what's? Just hypothetically, is what I'm asking.
Just a point of clarification. It would be the chief executive, it would be Stephanie who signs the contract. And it's a standard state contract. I can certainly send it to you. From 10 feet away and 10 miles an hour, it looks exactly like every state contract. The only difference is the, there's like one little sentence that tells you what it's for, and then there's the dollar figure and the duration. And just to be clear, it's 90 plus, potentially 90 after receipt of the equipment. So this equipment could take, I mean, we purchased for the ARPA, with the ARPA funds, much simpler sets, and it took two months to get them. So we may not see these until, you know, the end of September. I'm not sure how long it'll take to get these. And I, to answer your question, but without answering it, Jacob, I don't know if we could say, thank you for all of them, but I only want, you know, these three or four. I could pose that question. I don't know if I'd be able to get a response in time for Wednesday. I just, I can't believe they gave us a week.
Yeah, that's so odd. But you know what? They're usually reasonable. If we just say, hey, listen, we don't have the funds to install all of them, you know, we can do it in-house with two or three or whatever.
Well, I think the discussion has to continue about whether we want less than seven or eight. But John has his hand up, so I'd like to call on John Ray.
Scott? So continue the conversation. I think I'm following the facts, though. Why was this not in the capital plan if we knew about it in September and we put that together, and it wasn't in the capital plan presented to the Financial Planning Committee?
We didn't know what the award was going to be. I clearly indicated that, you know, two or three assemblies could be installed by us. I didn't know what the assemblies were. I wasn't able to get a price for the installation. I would not go up to the town meeting microphone and, you know, ask for $230,000 if I don't know what I'm spending it on or what's going to be approved. I wouldn't have done that. And in addition, the program started in September and was due in October. There wouldn't have been an opportunity to even, I mean, we engaged the Select Board as quickly as we could to see if they wanted to move forward. I don't know how it would have fit.
And then, go ahead, please.
I guess, what's reasonable, depending on maybe the timeline you sketched out for what we could do through the department versus hiring contractors? How many are reasonable to install if we have, if we're able to, if you think about the sequence of time that you just kind of laid out?
Two or three maybe, at most. We can't commit ourselves to doing it. That's the problem. I can't commit three staff members to installing this equipment or four staff members. We just can't do it. You do it as a side job because we have day jobs to do. One concern I would have was us doing the flatwork for the wheelchair ramps. It's very detailed flatwork. We don't do that. You know, I could put a sonotube in my backyard for a deck, you know, foundation, but I'm not going to do a flatwork concrete walkway. It's just not my skill set, and that's not our skill set either. We don't, we don't build like that. If it's wrong, then somebody has to come in and repair it and replace it, so. I would be comfortable doing a couple, three.
And those ones wouldn't require the work you described?
They would. They absolutely would. Yep, they would. And I would have a contractor coming and do it. We would set all the curbing and eventually, a contractor would do the flatwork, and then we'd come back and put in the foundation for the lights and, you know, as time allows, we'd get to it. We won't do the flatwork. Absolutely not. I'm not comfortable that it would get done right. We're not, I mean, even general regular paving contractors don't do it. They sub out all their flatwork.
Any other questions from the Board? Laura?
I'm sorry if this is already said, Scott. Was there any part of the funding from ARPA that was dedicated to these crosswalk enhancements?
No, we had talked about it during the meetings, and the concern was the timing. Everything needed to be appropriated, I'm sorry, obligated by December, whatever it was, 31st last year. The, it, the program came about just about as quick as the award has. So it was a really quick turnaround.
Okay. So what was the cost? So if we just divide that 235,000 by seven crosswalks, is that what the cost per location is going to be?
That's divided by eight, yep. Yeah, divided by eight, because one's a relocation. And the one that's relocated is much simpler than these for, as far as equipment goes.
Got it.
You know, ours, you see ours, they're on metal, black fence posts, I mean, signposts. There's no overhead lights. There's relatively simple equipment. That's not what these are. These are the ones you see on state highways, four-inch posts, you know, foundation covers. There's a lot more detail than what we purchase.
No, I remember that conversation well, and my thought is, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out, like, there's the safety piece, but there's also the financial piece. So it's really hard for me to weigh which options by listening to what my colleagues are saying to really figure out what the best solution is. But that was my only question. Thank you, Julian.
Kaylee, can you see anyone from the public? Maybe commenting on this?
You have one person in the waiting, in the attendee.
Yeah, I see one person in the attendees list with their hand raised.
Can we let that person in? And then Jacob, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, one other thing, but we can go to the public comment first.
Okay, thanks. Lisa? Lisa Mazzelli?
I gotta get both for you. All right, here we go.
Hi, good evening.
Hi. Well, I certainly have a background on this as well, so I thought I could be very helpful to y'all. First off, I would like to recommend that we find a way of getting all 15 lights, because we're not going to have this kind of an opportunity again. What would the value of the lights be from the state, which they have the overhead lights? What have all the ARPA lights been purchased, Scott, that we originally, that we originally paid for, for the seven locations?
Yes, all the lights have been purchased. The equipment is in, with the exception of the posts. These lights will be what you see around town now, which are the two-inch square black posts. If you drive around town, you'll see the contractor's sub has already done the flatwork as well as the curbing, and they're waiting on the signal sub, Central Mass Signal, they're up on Otis Street, to do the installations.
Okay, and we had four of those that were supposed to have overhead lights on them.
That's correct. We have, where are we? The overhead light ones are at Lincoln Street Elementary School, Melican Middle School, the north driveway over by where Pleasant Street intersection is, Church Street by Lower Pleasant, and North Gate at Chesterfield, those are the ones with the lights. The ones without lights are Melican, the southern entrance, that's close to like Lydia's Way, Pleasant Street, south of Lincoln, so Lower Pleasant, and then Lincoln Street at West Main. So that's where the pedestrian flashing light is by Crestwood.
Okay.
That's a long crosswalk.
So the one on Church and Pleasant is a duplicate because that's one of the ones that was supposed to also be from the state. Is that correct?
Uh, no. No, there's not-
Church and Howard. You've got Howard at Church, you've got, I thought you said you had Pleasant Street Opera at Church Street, which were the complies and eligible. It was number seven out of the eight from the state list.
So, we have Lincoln, Lincoln Street. This is through the ARPA funds. The three on Lincoln Street, two at Melican, well, four on Lincoln Street. One at West Main, one at Lincoln Street Elementary, two at Melican. We have Pleasant Street at Lincoln, that little, you know, when you cross from the middle school across Lincoln Street, and you walk up to Pleasant Street, 10, 20 feet or whatever, and then you go across Pleasant Street. Both of those crosswalks have RFBs.
Right.
What we don't have under ARPA is Pleasant Street, Lower Pleasant at Church Street.
Well, that one, I don't, I don't understand that because that's the one, that was the bone of contention, that Mitch was very insistent upon having one of those lights there with that spotlight on it. So that's why I'm saying it's a duplicate.
Or are you thinking that it was the one Howard, Howard and Church?
Howard and, no, that wasn't, that wasn't what was originally with ARPA. That Howard would have been with the state. But originally, ARPA had Pleasant and Church. And that was, that was, I have email. That was what Mitch wanted to put the first light on.
Right, right.
And so that was definitely in ARPA, one, it's in my list on my paper.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Church Street, west of Lower Pleasant. So west of Lower Pleasant.
That'd be closer to-
I think it'd be closer to Route 20. So a crossing of Church Street there, Pleasant Street, the two Lincolns, so you're correct. Lisa, that is on, the description is a little off. I'm basing this on the quotes I got from the lighting vendor, not on the design drawings or my list. I just brought those quotes so they can be comparable to what we're talking about tonight. There are no duplicates.
But the state has given one for that as well. Because you looked down the list tonight, and you talked with which one the states have. And the last one, the red, was West, you know.
The state approved on Hudson Street, one at Center Drive, each end of 56 Hudson, the big red industrial building, one on River Street End, one up more closer to Peppers.
Okay.
200 Hudson Street, which is up from Allen. You know, where the dam is at Allen Street, there's that big apartment building on the right-hand side by the river. There's a crosswalk there. They approved that one.
Okay.
Howard Street at Z School, right by the, between the cemetery and the school. That one on Davis Street at Indian Meadow.
Good.
And then the last one crossing South Street at Alcott. Those are the ones the state funded. One of these is going to be relocated, the one at Hudson and Center, that's the one that we previously put in, and the state's replacing, they're going to have us replace it with one of theirs. My suggestions for where that one could go, it could be at Howard and Church because we don't have anything there, even though that crosswalk is at a stop-controlled intersection, and East Main and Allen, which is where I would recommend it. We're doing that sidewalk on Allen, and I think that that location would be the most appropriate, but.
I agree with that because we had talked about doing that.
Yeah, and the other ones were other locations, Lisa, that we had discussed when you were on the board. But I think the East Main Allen is the most logical to relocate the one currently at Hudson and Center.
Absolutely, because it makes a nice loop. So-
So Scott, just to confirm, you said like 110% sure there's no duplication, right? We're not going to be paying twice for something.
Correct.
Okay. So it's just a matter of, do we want to allocate money that's already in the budget to pay for these, and then maybe ask the town to backfill that at a town meeting in the fall, assuming we're having one for White Cliffs?
Correct.
That kind of what we're, right?
Yeah, well, don't backfill it. I mean, I, you know, I mean.
And then how much is, like, the equipment that we're getting from the state? Do you know how much that equipment costs? Like, what would that retail if we wanted to go out and get it?
Uh, well, this, these seven last year were $80,000. But these don't all have the overhead lights. They don't come with the post. Um but these don't all have the overhead lights, they don't come with the posts and the foundations. Um and they're a bit more expensive than, you know, than, than the ones we purchased, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess somewhere maybe a hundred and twenty, something like that.
A hundred and twenty a piece?
Hundred twenty thousand all in. That's what I'm gonna guess, cuz I mean, we went with the two inch square posts cuz they're, they're affordable, they're not, they're not expensive, we can manage those, we can work with those. The state standard is a four inch diameter uh galvanized poles.
Okay.
And, and your professional expertise about pedestrian safety, anything that you know about it with your work on the Traffic Safety Committee? Are RFBs do increase pedestrian safety? Are there studies that show that or? I think, I think we've had this discussion before, we were talking about ARPA allocations and things, but. Is that the, the, the general thought that that's, these are important for increasing pedestrian safety?
They are, they're, they're um most applicable location is mid block crosswalks. Um you run it, you, 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 you're going down Davis Street, we just paved it, it's smooth as can be. You're probably gonna be speeding and then boom, I don't know where there's a crosswalk. That's unexpected. People don't expect that. Same thing on East Main where Allen, when we do that sidewalk, you're not expecting to have a pedestrian there. Stop controlled intersections, you see a stop bar, you see a crosswalk, there's a, there's a street light there, there you expect to see pedestrians, those are less critical. Um the mid block ones, that's, you know, the, the schools, you know, the, I know the um. Wreck Department uses Lincoln Street and 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 Melican for wreck and the kids walk across the crosswalks constantly. Um so I mean, those are mid blocks, then I don't, you don't expect to see those crosswalks used in the summer when the kids. Um you know, aren't around.
Uh you know, we, I don't know if Lisa finished her ca- call and comment. Did you, Lisa?
No, I didn't, thank you. Um so you're talking about monies and I'm looking at some of the paperwork that I have. You had a, you had a contingency on the ARPA money that was forty thousand dollars. You also had written in one of the emails on June twenty first. That for some of these grants, the DOT grants that could be considered for crosswalk enhancement work are complete streets. So we have complete streets money, four hundred thousand if I'm not mistaken. So if you use the forty thousand and twenty, two hundred thousand from the complete streets, you have the money for this, would you not?
Uh yeah, but the, the complete streets ship has sort of sailed. Um the town submitted an application for all of the funds for the Blake Street project. That was brought up at town meeting.
Well, I don't understand that, cuz when we, I've got all those paperworks too, when you brought it for in the beginning, it was not for Blake Street, it was for a variety of different streets. And I don't remember even being at the selectman meeting that we discussed giving it all to Blake Street, it was just taken. Point, we haven't decided how that's even gonna work with, with uh four West Main Street. The town, the town voted it down and we're still moving forward on it. So why aren't we going to take some of that money and use it where it can be used to help a greater number of people? Than putting it on a, a, a project that may not work because we're not gonna get, or we may not get more grant money.
That's a question for the planning director. I, I'm not involved with the Complete Streets project, I was part of the implementation cuz I'm Public Works. I'm sorry, I was part of the prioritization plan development on Public Works, that's what we did, I, I did not shepherd the Complete Streets program forward. I was the planning director. She's the one who uh along with the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Focus Group. I believe would be the ones to answer the question on their funding for their project. I'm not involved in that.
Alright, well, I would, I would recommend that the select people check into that because that was all done before MPIC was even put together.
There's a prioritization, so for those who aren't familiar with the Complete Streets program, Mast DOT gives you a half a million dollars worth of grant money. To put toward um improvement, safety improvements for pedestrians and and multimodal uh roadway users, cyclists. Um you put together a prioritization plan through public outreach, uh public hearings, surveys and the like. The Select Board uh reviews and approves that plan that goes to DOT for their final approval. It lists twenty, twenty-five, thirty prioritization projects. Allen Street was one of them. Uh Monroe and Gale, those were on it. Um I, uh Maple Street was on it, so there's a lot of sidewalks that I identified on it. Um pu- a portion of Blake Street was on it as well, um. There, there, there's twenty something projects, I can't list them all off the top of my head. Um but that, that, once that's adopted, the community can then apply for uh Complete Street grants to fund. One or more of those uh prioritization projects.
Well, that's, that's my suggestion, so you can um think about finding other ways as well.
Regarding the um, the contingency for um the ARPA funds. That can absolutely be um re-appropriated to a similar or same use. So that could go toward um installation of, for example, uh uh one of the Select Board members mentioned. Um if we installed them, who would do the flatwork? Well, we could hire a contractor with those funds to do it, or we would have hired it out of um our operating budget.
Scott, how much of this, how much is a sidewalk? I mean, I'm looking at this and like each of these things cost between ten and fifteen thousand dollars to procure. And it's thirty thousand dollars to install. So like, while it's nice to get the eight. It's also one where if you did it on your own timeline with your own control, I'm not sure that it's as attractive as it looks on paper.
Uh let me see, I have the, the quote here, just looking for a flatwork on it. Uh. Hundred and seventy-five dollars per square yard. So um it's a thirty-five thousand dollar number for all seven of them.
Cuz if, if you start thinking about it, right, if we just.
Five thousand dollars each.
So if we, if we bought them all for the high end of one twenty, and then we did thirty-five thousand dollars for a flatwork. That's one fifty-five versus the two thirty-one we're debating and just do it. On a timeline that works for the DPW where it can be layered in with the rest of. Rest of the work without having to have a clock going, being worried about doing it in ninety or hundred eighty days. Or, I, I mean, it's, I don't know, it just seems like this was, you know, we treat it like our money. Like it, it feels like, you know, you could do it cheaper the way I just described.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree. I could build a patio in my backyard over the entire summer. Or I can hire a contractor and it's done in a week. Um I'm happy to. Do as the board pleases, whether it be say no thank you to the um award or. To ask for two or three of them or whatever, whatever pleases the board, I'm, I'm happy to convey it and implement it.
But didn't you say that the installation had to be done within a certain amount of time?
Yeah, the, the memorandum of agreement indicates that it needs to be completed. Within ninety days of receipt of the equipment, where you can request a time extension uh during the first thirty days of those ninety days. Um I typically their time extensions are, don't exceed what the original duration is. Um they may, in this case, I don't know, but I would expect at a minimum they will give us another ninety days. So if, if the equipment takes two months to come here, that's eight months all in.
And if we went with John's idea, would you have the capacity to do more of the work?
I, I, no, I, we could probably do maybe one. I don't know, every, every six weeks or something like that, and then obviously we can't do it in the winter. So, you know, six, they did take, take us over a year to put them in. Which could be problematic in some locations, but you know, if the, if the, if the residents are willing to, willing to put up with it. Meaning what happens is you have a crosswalk, you have a crosswalk that's not usable. You know, you dig it up and then you go away, and then you come back and you dig it up and you go away, so the crosswalk would be. Not usable by pedestrians until the work is complete, cuz you could have a wheelchair accident occur or a baby carriage or something like that, so. If one of them takes us, you know, three weeks to do, then you don't have a crosswalk for three weeks, so we wouldn't wanna do those um in certain areas, I would think.
Okay, Ja- uh Jacob, you have been waiting.
Yeah, I, I um, I'm tending to agree with sort of, I was thinking of it the same way John was before he explained it, that like. How much were these? How much did we say, do we save by taking them from the state? I'll express again, as I've expressed in the past, not happy with how the state treats the towns, including in this situation here, we're gonna pay for something that costs. A third or a fourth of the total project and force you to pay for the rest under a timeline that we dictate, that, which is unreasonable. By the way, accept our agreement within seven days, eight days, ten days of us sending it to you. And then have it done within ninety days of us giving you the product, that we're not gonna tell you when we're gonna send it to you. Oh, and go fund all that. Like, not okay with that process. So what I would support is a. Not encumbering ourselves with a two hundred and forty thousand dollar contract with these contractors. I a hundred percent in listening and hearing Scott's point about the flatwork. And I'm like, yeah, let's find a funding source for the forty thousand-ish um to make sure that he has. An outside contractor able to do that part of it, and let's do these. As reasonably promptly as we can within understanding the other constraints and things that come up that his department has. And so I would say let's take, take them, take as many as we can and get them done as fast as we can. With only spending up to forty thousand-ish, you know, ballpark uh on the contractor, using whatever funding sources we can. I don't wanna commit two hundred and forty of our site, site, of our paving money and have to explain that to our residents why there's. Projects that need to get paved didn't get paved this year. Uh that's just not a real popular choice for me, so um. If, if there's any way for us to accept them and either return the ones we don't install on their timeline. Or have uh our town administrator redline the ninety day thing and throw in three years there and then sign it and send it back. They're not even gonna notice on their end, they're not paying attention. Um and then we, you know, if, if uh Mr. Mr. Sharp. If our uh DPW Director's Office can, you know, install them on a reasonable schedule with. With a flatwork contractor doing that necessary work, I think we're being responsible with the town's funds. Um and I think they'll appreciate the DPW and, and their involvement and their role and, and commitment, which they of course are. Uh, uh, what I'm a little, where I got a little bit spun off on this whole thing was. I went back and listened to the September um twenty twenty-four meeting and I saw the memo in the. In anticipation of the September twenty twenty-four meeting. And I didn't see anywhere in any of the documentation, and I listened to the clip of the video on YouTube four or five times, listening carefully for where it was discussed. That there was gonna be a, uh like what I heard today, a local match requirement. Local match wasn't mentioned anywhere. He did, I believe, mention that we would need to install them, so that's correct. But I don't think I saw anywhere that we were gonna have to hire a contractor or that it was gonna be thirty thousand dollars a piece to hire them. I feel like if we were in September and the Select Board, three of whom are sitting here today and one just called in. Were told, here, we're gonna get something that's worth ten thousand from the state that we're gonna have to commit thirty thousand to install. On the timeline that we can't control. I don't know if the same Select Board would have even gone with it. My, that's, that's rewinding the clock, but that was information that you didn't have. There was no mention.
I mean, we, we knew, we knew there was a cost to install from the ARPA discussions. I mean, we were in, three of us, we were. I remember the meeting fairly enthusiastic about asking for these things. Yeah, I mean, I get it, there, there's cost more to install than the part themselves. I mean, it's like anything on your car, right? A lot of times the part isn't cheap, it's getting to the part and installing it. Um I, 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 I just disagree. I mean, I, I just think being able to, to get these items from the state. Get them installed, yeah, there's a cost associated to it, but you're gonna exponentially increase the pedestrian safety where these things are installed. I think that's worth the two hundred and thirty-five thousand to take out of the paving. And we can ask the town to, to, to put the money to, 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 to refill that coffer. If they don't wanna do it, they don't have to do it. Um I know, I, I get a lot of feedback about traffic safety, about people speeding, about the safety of the crosswalks. Um you know, I, I just think to turn this away and not have these installed. I think the safety aspect outweighs the, the cost and relying on the DPW who does have. A day job to get things installed and buying them ourselves. Uh that, that delay, I think, is a cost in safety. I think it's important to get these installs and I think it's worth the cost, frankly.
Uh just a, a quick point of clarification, Madam Chair. Um so at the meeting that um Slugman Jones is, is, is referring to, I did indicate. Uh to the board, if we receive two or three of them, Public Works can certainly install them. More than that, we're gonna have to hire it out. There was no mention early on that there's a ninety day installation requirement. Um prior to, you know, as, as part of the award. Nor was there indication that there's gonna be a DOT requirement that all the wheelchair ramps get replaced in the process. You know, the, the minutes indicate um Northborough would cover installation costs. The, the assemblies would be handed to the town in a box and Northborough would cover installation costs. And the board consensus was to proceed. This was all in, in kind of parallel with the ARPA discussions. Which ironically are very, very similar in parallel um um to this, in that there's seven locations, the, that's. Very similar equipment, just DOT is a little more robust. Um our staff has never installed a, a four inch diameter um traffic pole nor overhead lights. Um we've done uh four sets of uh uh rectangular rapid flashing beacons since. In, in like four years, so we're by no means experts in how to do this. Um I would expect us to prob-. Probably have mass, uh Central Mass Signal come in and, and. Review our installations to make sure they're compliant with the state guidelines. You know, the other ones we bought, they're ours, we bought them, you know, they're not the best there is, they're good, they meet the needs. We were able to install them slowly and carefully. Um. I would wanna, I wouldn't wanna have us install them and, and have there be a, a lot of them and have there be a problem. I mean, we can, we can muscle through a few of them, I'm sure. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Jacob?
I wasn't quite done, so.
Oh, sorry.
Um, thank you for those clarifications, and maybe it was said in a different meeting, I know it wasn't said in that meeting, it's fine. The three of you were there, maybe you remember it better, uh but I watched the meeting and it wasn't said, but the point is, um, well, it, it. What, what roads aren't gonna get paved and what potholes aren't gonna get filled? I'm not sure I've seen data about exponential. Safety increase. I'm for, I'm for putting these, as I've said, uh in and uh putting them in. I don't think I've seen data to show that these will exponentially save pedestrians. Uh and what potholes are gonna now exist that are gonna cause other safety issues, so uh what? For two hundred and forty thousand dollars in pavings that aren't gonna be done, which roads, who, which residents' roads and which potholes aren't gonna get filled this year? If we do.
It would be next year. And we are working on our capital improvement plan as we speak, I have a meeting with our. Uh pavement management consultant later this week to come up with our capital plan for three years going forward. Um we put that on our, on our website, we redo the capital plan every three years, I'm sorry, every two years. It's a dynamic document, I may, in like this year, we were gonna do Lyman and Davis. Can't do Lyman. We went out there and started Davis and realized the entire road needs to be reconstructed. Rather than milling overlay, we had to reclaim the road. So that went from a four hundred thousand dollar project to six fifty. Um so now Lyman Street goes to the side, so there's, there's a, 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 a. Living dynamic associated with the pavement management plan is, but yes, John, Jacob, you're absolutely right, roads will go. Unpaved if it's not backfilled. Yep, and that's just like it did four years ago when we lost the um, uh the Rice Ave Culver. And uh after that, before that, we lost Fisher Street.
Uh, no, and I, and I appreciate that, Scott, and I think you're doing a, a great job here and it's, you know, the state's kind of putting us into a weird pickle with this timing. Requirement that's under no one's fault here, and I'm not trying to come off the wrong way here. I'm for, I'm for safety of the pedestrians, I'm for safety of the drivers, everything's a trade-off, I just think we're a little bit. Um paying too much with a gun to our head on uh signing up for two hundred and forty thousand dollar contractor here, and I prefer not to do that. Thanks.
I have one more question about financing this, and maybe Stephanie, you know the answer. What about using money from the stabilization fund? Hard no on that, okay? John, did, do you have your hand up or?
No, no, I, I, I'm good, I just, I'm tracking with all the conversation, I just, I mean, I would just like to, I mean. Center on what things cost and the timeline which we could do it and try to treat the taxpayer money as best we can, have. More options and funding for roads and things, so I think hopefully we can find a way to do both, even if it's not taking advantage of the full state. Offering of the eight.
Okay, Laura, thank you.
So I really appreciate everyone's feedback and I've been listening, I definitely understand the pressure that the state's putting us under. And Jacob, I really appreciate how passionate you are about raising that, and if there is red lines that we can put on this to give the town more. Power over this, to have not such stringent timelines, if that makes sense, I would be in support of that, if for nothing else, just to. Push back on the state a little bit with these mandates. And John, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from. And John, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from. My fear is that. By trying to save money and putting that pressure on the DPWs that don't have that same installing background. I really am not comfortable with putting that type of pressure on them. And I know you guys are both new to this conversation, but if I were to. Take all of the feedback from residents that I have received in the term that I've been here, which isn't even as long as Julianne has been. The number one request has been from pedestrians. It's been in the form of sidewalks and it's been in the form of safe, um, safe road crossings. So even without, you know, the money is like really important to me. I, I understand. I understand the conversation, but if postponing. The street repairs a little bit just to ensure that we can get these sidewalks prioritized from a safety perspective. I would be in favor of that. I look at these kids at Melican when they're walking downtown. I look at them when they're on Pleasant Street. I look at these intersections when I'm going to pick my kids up on Lincoln Street and they're dangerous. And I see the difference that those flashing lights make when I cross um one thirty-five. The difference is really, it's significant as a pedestrian. And so. As we've gone through all of this, my preference would be, you know, push back on the state as we can, but I really think we need to get these in place. Just in the spirit of safer streets for the residents. So, I hope. I hope that you understand the rationale and where I'm coming from, but that's kind of, it's really coming down to the number one request that we've gotten over the last years. And honestly, the reason that I'm on the board is because I wanted sidewalks. So I'll pause on that. And there are other areas that I'm more than happy to save money on, but I just feel like at this point. I really want these safer crossing options.
Thank you. Okay, so um, I'm going to draft um. State of motion. Stephanie, please correct me if something has to be added or subtracted.
Okay.
Here goes. Do we have a motion to accept the grant for RFBs and to use money from the DPW operating budget? To pay two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for installation? How much?
Two, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-five even, it's a hundred dollars, doesn't matter.
For installation.
Second, or so moved.
So moved. Second goes to Mike. This has to be a roll call vote. Jacob.
I'm a no on this one, Chair, sorry.
Laura.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
John?
I'm a no. I'm supportive of, overall, but just not the way we're doing this one.
Okay. And I vote aye. So it, the vote is three in favor, two opposed, and um. If you, congratulations, Scott, and I also want to say thank you for applying for the grant. It's, you know, whatever it is, it's. It's a little bit of money from the state, so.
We'll, we'll do what we can and um, the resident, uh, Misselli brought up the contingency in the ARPA funds, which. Hopefully that work comes in without the need for utilization of a contingency and those monies can go toward this project. Um, reducing the impact on the paving program.
That'd be great. That'd be great. And Jacob, we will find another venue for you to express your concerns about. Projects from the state that.
I fully support that. I agree.
Thanks.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. I, I'm glad that these are happening. I just, I've already said my concerns.
Fully understood, and we'll talk about my feelings about that.
Very good argument. Okay, next on the agenda is um, public comment. Is there anyone else? Kaylee, can you help us out here who has a hand raised who would like to speak to the board?
I don't see anybody in the attendees list.
Okay, all right then, um, third on the agenda is any other business to come before the board? Oh, we have a hand raised by Lisa Mizelli.
Sorry, went so quick. Um, yeah, I was going to ask another question. Public, public comment is for anything, right? The meeting, it doesn't matter?
Yeah.
I was going to bring up, we had originally purchased four of speeding lights. Blinking speeding lights that tell you how fast you're going. And with the installation of them, I believe in June. Um, they're still not working right. As a matter of fact, there was one on Maple Street that they finally took it away and they're fixing it to fit, to put it back, but. But the uh, my car is a small car and when I go down uh next to um. Northgate, my car doesn't register. And I was driving with a, it was a small electric vehicle in front of me and it didn't register. And um, and I really am concerned that we spent money. And we have, we have lights that aren't still working and it's almost August. So I, I wanted to alert you of that and I, you know, I do know that the police chief has been working with him, but. I'm concerned about the vendor and I'm concerned about the fact that they should be up and working when they get installed. And there should have been somebody that walked around and, you know, made sure it all works. I think what's happened with the smaller vehicles is that the vision line from the computer eye is not. Wide enough to be able to collect small cars. I mean, I don't mind, I won't get a ticket, but I don't think that's what they were made for. And um, and I'm almost sure they were supposed to have, and I haven't found my paperwork, but they were supposed to have the speed limit in white. Above the blinking sign, because it doesn't make a lot of sense if you do not know what the speed limit is posted as. Turns out to be more fun. Oh, let's see how fast I'm going. But it's not teaching you much if you don't know what the posted limit is. And that you're either going too fast or you're going at the correct speed. So I just wanted to do a tickle for that.
Scott, do you have any information on this?
I, I do. That um, that initiative was uh, uh, shepherded by our, our police chief. Um, I have been involved in um positioning, finding positions for those uh pieces of equipment. The vendor is very, very well aware of the problems with the, with the equipment, not picking up cars. Um. They've been out a few times to uh reposition things. They've removed some equipment. Um, the Chief Griffin and I have not been shy in our ability to express our dissatisfaction with their performance. Um, so uh, we appreciate you bringing it to um the board's attention and, and we certainly are aware of it and. Are trying our hardest to get the vendor to make things work the way they're supposed to.
Thank you.
I appreciate that and I do know he is. I just wanted to, to give it on the list and maybe he shouldn't be a preferred vendor anymore. But thank you and you're doing all a great job. Happy.
Thank you.
All there. Bye-bye now.
Okay, is there any other public comment? I don't see anything. Kaylee, do you see anything?
I don't see anybody in the attendees list.
Okay, so next on the agenda is to move into executive session.
I didn't know if we need a special motion or if you needed.
Yes, we need a special motion and I will make.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I move that the Select Board enter into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Subsection A. Clause Three for the following purposes. To discuss strategy with respect to collective, collective bargaining and to vote on the proposed agreements with. The Northborough Firefighters Local Three-O-Five-Six, IAFF. Second, Massachusetts Coalition of Police AFL-CIO, Northborough Patrol Officers Union. Local One-Sixty-Five Patrol Officers. Massachusetts Coalition of Police AFL-CIO, Northborough Superior Officers Union, Local One-Sixty-Five-A. For sergeants. And the last would be Northborough Municipal Employees Association, N-M-E-A. Also, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiating a tax increment financing TIF agreement with Secoban. Research America located at Nine Goddard Road as authorized under Article Forty-Seven of the twenty-twenty-five. Annual Town Meeting. And to discuss strategy with respect to the rental agreement. Between the town of Northborough and Elegant Banquets for the White Cliffs property located at One-Sixty-Seven Main Street, Northborough, Mass. As authorized by Town Meeting under Article Forty-three of the twenty-twenty-four Annual Town Meeting Warrant. The board has determined that having this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect. On the town's bargaining position. Is there a second?
Second.
No. So moved. No, I, I moved it. I'm sorry. Sorry, Jacob, what?
Whatever we need to get it forward, second.
Okay, so I made the motion. I specifically said I make the motion, so I need a second. Laura, you're seconding.
Chair, could I have comment?
Yeah.
Uh, I think you went out, you're going out on section three, subsection three of um. Chapter Thirty-eight, Twenty-One-A, uh, which deals with discuss uh strategy regarding collective bargaining. You also have to uh declare, like you did, dealing with rental property. That an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position.
Oh, I thought you did say that, Julianne.
Say that, I'm not sure, then I, I'm sorry if I.
No, that's all right. I, I thought, I thought you did say that. This discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, I would so move with counsel's amendment and with that finding for every topic that's on the list.
Would that satisfy, satisfy your attorney?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table. It's um, with amendments. I need another, a, a second then. Okay, Mike has seconded. This is a roll call vote. Stephanie and um our legal counsel, are you okay with this procedure? Okay, then roll call vote. John Ray.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Jacob.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I vote aye. We will move into executive session. We have to adjourn this section of the meeting. So can I have a motion to adjourn the open session of the Select Board meeting?
Yeah, I hate to interrupt again. You need to declare whether you're going to reconvene in open session. Or you, you will end the meeting after the executive session.
So I did state that at the beginning of the meeting, but um, I'll state it again that. After our executive session, we are not reconvening in open session. We will adjourn from executive session.
Thank you.
So, right.
So moved with that clarification.
Thank you. Um, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor? John Ray, this is roll call.
Aye.
Thank you, Laura.
Aye.
Jacob.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I vote aye. This, this part of the meeting, the open session meeting is adjourned. Everybody um has to go on to a new link and you can take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I sent everybody the link again, just in case.
Steph, can you send that to my work address?
Oh, yeah.
Just because I'm having troubles. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everyone. See you in.